Welcome to the business meeting for Wednesday, July 8, 2020. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, and gives it all, liberty and justice for all.
Councilman Sorenji?
President.
Councilwoman Resonetti? I think your, your mic is muted, but you're here. Councilwoman Riley?
President.
Councilwoman Friedman?
President.
Councilman Burns?
President.
Councilman Strom?
President.
And President Scanlon?
President.
That's all seven here.
Okay, on to the approval of minutes from June 17, 2020, business meeting, the July 1, 2020 special business meeting. Councilman Strom.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just so you know, I don't know if it's just me. I can barely hear you, Tom. It might be just me. I can hear everybody else is closer to the mic, but...
Is that better?
Yeah, that's better.
That's a lot better.
Yeah, and my apologies, but I was muted by the organizer. I know what was going on there, but I think we're fixed. Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President. I asked for approval of the minutes from the June 17, 2020 business meeting and July 1, 2020 special business meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Hi.
Anyone opposed? Okay, we're on to the public hearings. I'll let Lee read any for the public hearing, please.
Okay, so tonight we have a public hearing for the proposed FY46 CDBG ESG home budget and annual action plan. Residents could submit their comments electronically through email to clerk@citybington.com before the meeting or through telephone. You can call in now at 772-7101. The number again is 607-772-7101.
Lee has some emails that were sent into the clerk's office. He'll read them all.
Yes. So the first one's a little tricky. It's sort of a two-part, one's for public comment, the other's for the public hearing right now. So I'll read the public hearing portion of that first. So this first one here is from Robert Wilson. He's a Binghamton resident. And he says that first, are the residents of the city really supposed to believe that they, what they saw tonight in the so-called public hearing on the proposed CDBG RL 20-129, which is item number seven of the agenda, will be fairly and duly considered by the members of the city council before they vote on ordinance 20-60, which is item number 12? And does this not, does this not give the appearance that the mayor expects the members of this council to act as his rubber stamp instead of the elected representatives of their constituents? Does this sham hearing mean the councils and the mayor's standards for public accountability and transparency? That was from Robert Wilson. Next, we have an email that came in from Dan Livingston, who lives on Park Street. "The allocation of $0.5 million of youth programming money towards a city park improvement project betrays a flawed process inside City Hall. Investing in public park infrastructure is no substitute for structured, tailored, and timely youth programming. By this logic, conducting sidewalk repairs is youth programming because young people play on the sidewalk, and conducting street repairs is youth programming because young people ride their bicycles on the street. The challenges facing our city, our city's youth and families because of COVID-19 require new thinking and a coordinated response. The data regarding failures. Summer school won't be available for some time, but what you do know is that one-third of students stop participating in structured activities. The families across the city are struggling to adapt on their own. In many ways, aspects of this CDBG budget are a symptom of larger problem in the city's response to changing conditions due to COVID-19. We cannot pretend like this pandemic is just a bump in the road and that once it, it has come to pass, things in our city will largely return to a similar place that we found ourselves in the last year at this time. Not only has the economy been transformed around us in subtle and significant ways, but the face of poverty in our city is rapidly changing. The new, the need for new thinking and how City Hall allocates its annual CDBG award is evident. What the city needs right now from the Binghamton City Council, first and foremost, is active involvement in the decision-making process inside City Hall, providing oversight in the allocation of CDBG money and the conduit for public engagement in the city's response to poverty in the time of COVID. The uncertain fate of the city's Federal COVID Cares Act, CDBG money is an object lesson in why the city council needs to be actively involved to make sure that the city remains on track. Municipalities across country and across state have already received and dispersed CARES Act funding, while the fate of the city's funding remains uncertain due to mismanagement and mismanagement of the application process. The city council should be engaging with each other to find common cause in ensuring that the city's response is a model of excellence and that municipalities can learn from. I understand that people are treating, are retreating to their partisan political camps, but what the city of Binghamton needs right now is city council that works together to balance the power, balance the power in City Hall and ensure that our city rises to the occasion." That's all we have electronically for the CDBG public hearing.
What is it? So number again, please, Lee? What do we call it?
And that number, if you want to call in tonight, is 607-772-7101. How you're here to call in for the public hearing? Okay, I'll put you on speaker to state your name and if you're a city resident, okay? Okay, can you hear us?
Hello?
Yes.
My name is Hina Farad. And I live in the city of Binghamton, 1999. Current district on 8th. Bowled her moon from 1974 upstate. I am committed to supporting the youth, a big, especially support low-income children. We cannot afford a boarding girl club. Our parents can't afford a girl club because they have to go to work, have to do work at 8:00. And if you read the child, it's seven thirty today. It's five dollars a child. When the spending hours are needed, I have shared that over and over every year, and nothing has been done. We continue to increase care funding. I love the call of the park. And I want to see the look as good as Red Park and the other parks. I can now recall a camp for all the vision activities at the park. Great. However, we have a tournament, basketball tournament that is for the youth, and the youth really enjoy it. I would like to see that take on. Develop how people base it on it.
We can't hear.
Ma'am, can you speak up a little bit?
Excuse me, excuse me. Can you speak up by any chance? They're having a hard time hearing you. Hello?
Majida, are you finished? Majida, is that you? Hey.
Finish your call back.
Hi, you're here for the public hearing? Okay, I'll put you on speaker. Just tell us your name and if you're a city resident, okay? Okay, can you hear us?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is Rob Douglas. I just want to say, prior meetings so far, the Republicans have had what the president did, and they should really be ashamed of themselves. Even the Democratic members, I really wish they would speak up and call out these other members for what they're doing right now.
Excuse me, excuse me.
Which is start to finish.
You got to tell me.
And as we read on the comments, I agree that the council is being used to rubber stamp agendas that are not supported by the community. It is shameful that it's taken us months to approve the Black Lives Matter Bureau. It is shameful that Republican members...
Sir, this part of the meeting is for the CDBG proposed budget?
I do what I want. People that the Republican members veto.
Mr. Douglas, excuse me, Mr. Douglas, I can't hear you.
I'm requesting that all the Republican members resign.
All right, thank you for your phone call.
Fuck you.
That's a class act, whoever that was. I don't know who that was, but that's a class act. Yeah, I hope you guys heard that one.
As a reminder, all of our callers, constituents, decorum is required during any public meeting, and no profanity would be protected speech in this court.
We are still, well, at least I'm still having a hard time. It's like going in and out. It could be my Wi-Fi. Are you guys hearing everything well?
I'm hearing, I'm hearing you, but I'm having trouble hearing the phone too. It's not going well. I mean, I heard him better. I heard him better. Of course, I heard the end of it better. I didn't want to hear that, but I couldn't...
I only heard what he said at the end. I only heard what he said at the end. He kind of emphasized that.
Yeah.
I think he used profanity to describe Republican council members. It was very nice. I think we heard that loud and clear.
And I, I would just like to say that after that phone call and what I read on Facebook today, that I don't believe that there's anybody on this body that is a racist. I believe that what we are doing here is a legislative process and that everybody has, everyone is trying to do the right thing. Thank you.
Thanks, Joe.
We'll close that portion of the meeting. I need a motion to close the portion for the CDB public hearing.
Mr. President, motion to close the public hearing.
I need a second, please.
Second.
All right, that portion of the meeting is closed.
Voice vote?
All in favor?
Hi.
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 Hi. Are you going to set the public hearings now?
Yes. Okay, so tonight we have three different public hearings that we need to set. Hi, you're here for the public comment? Yes, hold on, I'll, I'll put you on hold because we have to read the public hearings first, okay? All right. Okay. So tonight we're setting three different public hearings. The first is, city council will hold a public hearing regarding a proposed amendment to the 2020 bond ordinance for the tennis courts at Recreation Park in the amount of $9,692,235, an increase of $700,000 from the original bond ordinance.
Is that the dollar amount, right? Nine million?
Yes.
Okay.
Or that came from Chuck earlier. And then the second public hearing is, city council will hold another public hearing regarding a proposed amendment to the 2016 bond ordinance for the water filtration sludge extraction system to increase the total project cost to $6,100,000, and that we expect grant revenues to offset the cost, not to exceed $3 million. And then the third public hearing that we're setting tonight is city council will hold a public hearing regarding a proposed bond ordinance for design of a new fire station in an amount not to exceed $800,000. We should note that all three of these public hearings will be held at the next city council business meeting, held on Wednesday, July 22, 2020, at 6:30 PM in the second floor atrium located in City Hall, 38 Holly Street. Residents wishing to submit comment for the public hearings may do so electronically by emailing their comments prior to the meeting to clerk@cityofbington.com or via telephone during the public hearings at 607-771, or, sorry, 607-772-7101. A city hall will be close to the public during the meeting. For any questions, please contact the city clerk's office. Thank you.
Okay, not to add to public comments section. You have five minutes to call in. Lee will announce the phone number again. Please be respectful. You're welcome to call in. Lee will give the number right now.
And that number again is 772-7101. Yes, and please speak up. Are you still there? Okay, I will, I'll put you on speakerphone. You can talk to everyone, okay? Just tell us, yes. Five minutes. All right, thank you. Okay, please state your name and if you're a city resident.
Hi, my name is Hina Kornopolas, and I am a resident of Binghamton. I live on Laurel Avenue, and I am in the ward that is being represented by Sophia Restini, the councilwoman. I am phoning to make a comment about the proposal for a mural to be painted on Wall Street by a local artist and the accompanying piece of legislation to go with it. I have been living in Binghamton for 10 years, and it was really hard to make my home here. But now I am really appreciative of being able to live in a small town with access to nature, a place that makes it, you know, a good place to live in this really hard time. I do need to say that I am a white woman. I am not from this country. I immigrated 10 years ago. I grew up in Europe. And I would like to speak to you about Black Lives Matter. Maybe you have heard about Black Lives Matter. It can cause people who are white, especially, to feel upset because when people hear Black Lives Matter, white people can then think, oh, what about me? What about my life? But maybe it's helpful to remember that when we say Black Lives Matter, we're not saying that other lives don't matter. We're saying that in this country, with its long history, 400 years, a brutal history, a horrific history of using black bodies, of using indigenous bodies, of using people of color, brutalizing them, murdering them, raping them to make more slaves, that in this country, we have a long way to go. And one way, one thing that we can do is that we can say Black Lives Matter to recognize that what we have been doing is not good. Black lives are disposable in this country. And what is happening now that we have access to the internet, we have access to our phones, we have access to YouTube, we see black bodies being brutalized all the time. And if you do not believe what I'm saying, you maybe want to watch some news. And also, I urge you, if you are white, I want you to go out and find for me evidence that what is happening to black bodies is also happening to white bodies because it is not. The police and everyone in this country have been taught over generations that black bodies are disposable and can be harmed and need to be eliminated and killed. That is something that is in our genes almost. And I want to ask you to please vote yes on a small, small thing that would signal to the black people who live in our town and to the people of color that this community cares about everyone and about black people, especially at this moment and in this time. It is not a big thing. Wall Street is a tiny little side street. I think I could understand if people were maybe opposed to painting Black Lives Matter on Main Street. And God, I wish we would, because that's where really it needs to go. But in a small side street, I'm sure that maybe we can bring ourselves to let a local artist paint those letters as a signal to everyone in our community that we are aware of our history, that we know what this country has done and keeps on doing to black people and people of color. I have respect for the work that you do. I know that it takes a lot of time. I am trying to read along with you the minutes, the kinds of things that you work through. And I, I know that you do this job because you care about the city that you live in. And I hope that you can bring yourself to vote yes on the mural and yes on the piece of legislation for a resolution to support Binghamton's black residents and maintain an inclusive community, a community that I want to be proud of and not ashamed of for, you know, not voting for this thing, also making the Juneteenth flag raising an exclusive event rather than open to the community. I appreciate you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Turn out the number again. Yeah, the number again is 772-7101. Hi, you're here for a public comment? Okay, I'll put you on speaker.
Okay, Tom Stanley, can you hear that? And David, can you hear that? And all of you, consider yourself.
Sorry, that person was using profanity, so don't mind that I...
No, no, it's fine. No, you're, yeah. I didn't, I didn't even catch what he said.
Actually, can I say something? I think maybe we need to allow that profanity to be heard. My guess is that it's going to be geared primarily towards Republicans, but either way, why don't we hear that profanity? See what's out there, what's being said about us? And I, I think the community needs to hear that. Just my opinion, Mr. President. I don't know what the rules are, but maybe something to consider.
So I can, I can speak to that. Generally, at the council, we allow public comment while words like corrupt, maybe throw around. That's not propane. However, our meetings are generally kept with decorum, and profanity is not permitted. However, council would like to waive those rules tonight, I understand. But that is up to you. This is our general practice. And typically, we don't allow obscenity, incitement of violence, or profanity at city council meetings. And that would guide us for the city giving out.
Councilwoman Resonetti, I think we, I think we only need to hear like 30 seconds of, maybe 10 seconds of somebody starting it. Probably enough, right? So I didn't, I didn't catch what he said. I, I blanked on that one, but we'll certainly hear what the next people say. But I don't know how much profanity we need to hear, you know? I mean, it's, it's a lot of...
Well, I think the community needs to hear what certain actions and comments, how they incite this sort of thing towards people without having open communication. I think that might be just an important piece. But whatever you decide, whatever the rules are, frankly, I, I find this really troubling.
I understand.
Yeah, I, I understand, Councilwoman Resonetti. We've had three phone calls and two were profanity. So let's see what the next one is, will be another one. I don't know.
Let's go on and case by case.
All right, let's see it. Let's open it up for the community to watch. I'm ready.
Let's go on a case-by-case basis, and rather than hanging up, we'll give the caller an advisement if necessary. Okay? Why don't you read that number again?
Okay, so the number again is 772-7101.
This is Councilwoman Friedman. Oh, sorry. I was going to say while we're waiting, but now we're not...
Hi, you're calling for the public comment? Yes, hold on, I'll put you on speaker, okay? All right, can you hear us?
My name is Sharon Bryant, and I'm a longtime resident and homeowner in the city of Binghamton. I live on 61 Davis Street. And this week, I was disappointed to learn that...
I'm sorry, can you speak up a little bit? It's a little hard to hear you.
...did not have the full support of the city council.
Excuse me, Ms. Bryant?
And during this time of COVID, it's become really apparent that African-Americans who are dying are becoming infected.
I'm sorry, Ms. Bryant? Sorry, it's a little hard to hear you. Can you, I'll put you on speaker again. And can you speak up a little louder? I'm sorry.
So you can start over?
Okay.
Yes.
You can start over. Okay, hold on, I'll, I'll put you on speaker, okay?
Hello, my name is Sharon Bryant, and I live at 61 Davis Street. I'm a longtime resident and homeowner in the city of Binghamton. And my public comment is regarding the Black Lives Matter resolution. And this week, I was disappointed to learn that the Black Lives Matter resolution did not have the full support of the city council. I, especially during this time of COVID-19, when we, when it's become very apparent that African-Americans have been dying and becoming infected and losing their jobs disproportionately, along with the ceaseless killings at the hands of the police, really demonstrates that we need to proclaim that black lives matter. I'm an African-American woman. I'm raising an African-American male child, and I, I want him to be safe. I want him to live in a community that values our lives. And I just would like all of the city council members to reconsider this resolution because it doesn't matter whether you're Democrat or Republican. It should be a bipartisan effort because regardless of your political relationship, you represent the African-American citizens in your district. So I urge you to please reconsider and to support the Black Lives Matter resolution. Thank you.
Thank you for your phone call.
Thank you. Okay, that number again is 772-7101.
Councilwoman Friedman, you were going to say something?
Yes, I was just going to say, I know that there were some comments that were received electronically, so I was just hoping that those would get read into the record as well. I figured while we were waiting, but I guess we're not, we're not waiting anymore, so perfect.
We'll make sure to get ready for the public comment.
Hello? Hi. Here, I'll put you on speaker and tell us your name and if you're a city resident, okay? Okay, can you hear us?
I sure can. Can you hear me?
Yes. Yes.
Hey, this is Bob Trance, who I'm on the, on the South Side over in Councilwoman Burns' district. I have to admit, I did not vote for Mr. Burns, but regardless, that's where I live. I'm, I'm also calling about the, the Black Lives Matter painting on the, on the Wall Street. I'm honestly really not in favor of it. I'm certainly in favor of, of changing police procedures and such to, to make things fairer across the board if necessary. I happen to have three sons who are police officers. And I'm just as appalled as I guess the Black Lives Matter people are at the way the police officers are being treated today. And I understand there's a select few out there that, that haven't done the bads justice. But at the same time, there's 99.5% of them that are, that are true blue and, and trying to do the right thing and trying to help people. And I just think that painting a BLM on a road isn't going to accomplish anything. And that's kind of where I feel about it. And, you know, I can see that Councilwoman Resnetti is quite upset tonight. And I don't know what all the upsetness is for, but this, this whole subject upsets the hell out of me. Thought I'd throw a swear word in there. Sorry. But I guess that's all I got to say. I just don't believe it's the right thing to do. And if, if it ends up being done, then I would assume that opens the door, sets the precedent for any other group to come along. And the council's gonna have to because they set the precedent to paint their own logos or whatever on the city streets in Binghamton. That's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you for your phone call.
Thank you.
Can I, can I just thank this caller for picking up on, well, on all his comments, but picking up that I am upset? And just to clarify, I'm upset because people are telling us to go, you know what, ourselves as council members here. And we have like my kids listening and other people's kids listening. And so, yeah, it's upsetting. Thank you for seeing that, sir. I appreciate your phone call.
Okay, that number again is 772-7101.
I want you to go and read some of the, while we're waiting for phone calls.
Sure, I'll do that. So while we're waiting, I can get started on some of the letters that came in. Some of the council members asked me to read these. So the first one is a letter sent to Sophia Resnetti. This one is from city resident Diane Cruz at 11 Hayden Street. She said, "Please extend my thanks to city council and the public works on behalf of all the neighbors on Hayden and Mendelson Street for the significant, significant improvements made to the infrastructure by the city in recent months. From the perspective of homeowners, the city's investment protects our personal investment in our own properties and improves property values. The recent milling and paving on these streets caps a year of related improvements, including replacement of all curbs and improved accessibility, repair and reconstruction of storm drains, repair and replacement of manhole covers, repair and replacement of water main covers. The entire project required forethought and planning on the part of public works. And I hope you'll extend our admiration for a job well done to those who were involved. I've been impressed with the organization and the teamwork from city employees and contractors alike as these projects were completed. I've observed as all of these steps were implemented as well and appreciate the attention to detail throughout. The new pavement is visually appealing and functional. On a personal note, during our thunderstorm and heavy downpour in recent days, I watched the water flow efficiently into and down the storm drains for the first time in the 15 years that I lived, I've lived on this street. I've cleared those drains many times and tried to rake broken pavement to remove obstructions to water flow and create proper slope without much success. I admire great field engineering when I see it. Moreover, I'm certain routine public works functions such as street sweeping and snow plowing will be more efficient with the crumbling pavement out of the way. And I won't have to wash down my front porch as often this summer because the new pavement will help keep the airborne grit and traffic dirt under control. The milling and paving on Hayden and Mendelson Street, along with all the good public works planning and implementation that, that preceded the final steps, was not an inconvenience. The action was a tremendous benefit to the neighborhood. Thank you for your advocacy on behalf of this district. Sincerely, Diane Cruz." Okay, next we have the second half of Robert Wilson's email. Hi, you're here for public comment? Okay, I'll put you on speaker and tell us your name and if you're a city resident. Okay? Okay, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Okay, please tell us your name.
Hi, my name is Nicole Schiffer. I live on the South Side of Binghamton. I'm calling because I have some concerns and some comments. First, I don't understand how Black Lives Matters can't be painted or you have to vote on it and go through your process. But Emily, who does murals all over the city, doesn't seem to get any process like Kristen's going through. I don't understand how that is possible with one person can't and one person has to go through up and downhill battle. Also, there's a rumor going around, I guess you could say that you guys are gonna paint Blue Lives Matter. How is that possible if you guys aren't voting on that or don't have the community input? It just seems like there's a lot of racial debating going on within the city representatives that really shouldn't be going on. You guys are the representative city of Binghamton residents, and I don't know if you guys are really representing that. Some of them, I think that you guys are getting in your personal feelings and it's coming out when you're not representing people or you don't want to hear people's voice. I guess that's it. Thank you.
Thank you for the phone call.
Thank you. Yes. So I'll go back to Mr. Wilson. So it is my understanding that council members Skorinji, Resnetti, Strawn, and Scanlon refused to sponsor Councilwoman Friedman's resolution acknowledging the long history of systemic racism in this country and condemning ongoing acts of racist violence thereby preventing a public vote on the resolution at tonight's meeting. I invite council members Skorinji, Resnetti, Strawn, and Scanlon to each make a public statement tonight explaining exactly why it is they opposed to block the vote on this resolution and did so out of view of the public. I'd like to ask whether they're aware of that they, that they're having done so gives the appearance not just of indifference towards the hardship suffered by black indigenous and other people of color as a result of systemic racism, racist oppression, but of an actual animus towards these communities and our cities. Do you believe and will you say here tonight without any equivocation that Black Lives Matter? Are the members of this council concerned about the mayor's flagrant disregard for the will of the people regarding the matters of housing, food insecurity, substance use, and mental health education and so-called criminal justice as discussed in the community forum at Rec Park on June 7? Or do you think the Sham Change Coalition is a sufficient response to the unprecedented civil unrest in the city of Binghamton, even though it was conveyed by the mayor out of view of the public and is composed of people who manifestly do not represent the will of the community? Does the council support the mayor acting not only unilaterally but in opposition to the will of its constituents? Finally, what does the council intend to do about racism in our schools? At last month's board meeting, the representation from the superintendent's office made transparently disingenuous use of procedural technicality to dismiss statements submitted by the public to read into the record. When the board president read one of the statements anyway, the superintendent appeared noticeably agitated and opted to gaslight the public, saying district policy already accounted for their concerns. Furthermore, do you think the district should continue to employ teachers and public artists who make racist statements on social media? As you could see, the theme here isn't across the board, lack of accountability, transparency, and the community involvement with regard to the actions of the mayor, members of the city council, and the school district administrators. Unless and until the officials of the city start listening to the community and acting on their behalf, all of your meetings and coalitions and so-called public hearings are nothing more but a farce. And then we have another letter here from a Thomas Wazita who lives in Binghamton. "Hello, I would like to voice my support for Councilwoman Friedman's resolution in support of Black Lives, which has not, which was not allowed to be on the agenda for the business meeting today. It is a shame that it cannot even be brought to a vote due to lack of sponsorship. The resolution is non-bias. The shutdown of this resolution is a prime example of how hard party lines are endangering the lives of Americans." Thank you. Next, we have another letter from Erin Morrissey, who's a city resident. "Thank you for sharing the information in your proposed legislation to marginalized communities in Binghamton. The following is my public comment. As a Binghamton resident, I am appalled by the idea that Councilwoman Friedman's resolution condemning racism and discrimination and supporting the idea of a more welcoming, inclusive Binghamton is so controversial that Republican council members would prevent it from even being on the floor for a vote. I fully support this legislation and find it deeply concerning that Republican members of the city council can't even bring themselves to condemn racism and commit to uplifting the most disadvantaged among us. To be silent is to be complicit. Our Republican representatives have gone even farther than that. They are deliberately distancing themselves from even acknowledging racism exists and that we are a society and that we as a society could do better. I urge these council members to reconsider their position. Change is necessary, and even simple proclamation like this is a sign of forward motion. I want to live in a city that believes in progress, not one that believes in sweeping these issues under the rug." Thank you again for posting about this. Please also, please pass my thanks to Councilwoman Riley, who shared the information on her page. Hi, you're here for public comment? Hold on, I'll, I'll put you on speakerphone. Okay? Okay. Okay, please state your name again.
Hi, my name is Natalie Fension. I live on the West Side. And I just find it disturbing that someone would vote against putting up a mural that says Black Lives Matter. It almost seems to indicate that the people who vote against saying that are also saying that, you know, if you want to use the same, like, by saying Black Lives Matter, you're saying that white lives don't matter. If you can't say the Black Lives Matter, are you then in turn saying that black lives don't matter? Is that your intention by voting no on something like this? It's just a mural. Just put it up. Pretty simple. Thank you. Bye.
Thank you.
Thank you. So the next letter we have here is from Sharon Bryant, who we heard from earlier. So if it's okay with you, I'll, I guess I'll summarize this. It just elaborates on what she spoke about earlier. She's a longtime resident in the city of Binghamton and disappointed that the Black Lives Matter resolution didn't get the full support of city council. Okay. The next letter we have here is from Eric Leonard. He says, "I would like to take a moment to discuss the proposed fire station on Pine Street. I find the fact that the mayor announced this before consulting with any of the residents of that area upsetting but not shocking. The mayor's callous behavior with regards to informing the local area is not new. As a property owner on Pine Street, over the last three years, we've had to deal with unexpected water shut-offs for this entire block with no notice, as well as city-paid contractors literally blocking and operating heavy equipment in my driveway, which makes getting my car out to go to work hard. And also, as an electric car owner, I need to be able to park in my garage to charge. But why would the mayor care? It's not like anyone in this area is worth bothering, bothering within his opinion. While I understand the need for a new fire station, the proposed location will sandwich it between two existing houses and will cause significant disruptions to the neighborhood as well as dropping property values. I hope that the impact of this construction is carefully considered because at the moment, it feels like the city is shoving a loud diesel-reeking facility into the corner of a town that they don't care about." Eric Leonard. And that's it for the emailed-in communications for tonight. Yes, and that number for public comment tonight one last time is 772-7101. Hi, you're here for public comment? Okay, hold on. I'll put you on speaker. Okay, please tell us your name and if you're a city resident. Can you hear us? Hello? Hi, can you hear us? Okay, I'm sorry. I'm not sure what's happening. I'll, I'll try to put you on speaker again. Okay, can you hear us this time? Hi, can you hear us? Okay, sorry. I'm not sure what's happening. Go on speaker. Do you want to try calling back, maybe? Okay, sorry about this. Hi, can you hear us again? Okay, I'll put you on speaker. Okay? All right, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes. Please state your name and if you're a city resident.
Yes, Christopher Perez, and I am a resident of the North Side of Binghamton.
Okay.
So I'm just calling because I'm kind of confused. Like, I'm sure a lot of people are at this point of why, why...
Could you actually, could you speak up a little bit so everyone can hear you?
Sure. So I'm calling because I'm confused, like everyone else, it sounds like at this point, on what the specific reasons are that this was not put on the agenda and how it could be overlooked in such a time where we could have an opportunity to bring people together by acknowledging the direct oppression that happened systematically. And I don't even believe that there's an argument. I want to read a little quote. And I'm sure a lot of the people on the panel seem so diverse as they are and representing not only themselves as legislators in the political realm, but also representing a realm of, 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 of personal property that they actually represent, being social workers or, you know, of such like that. So I want to read a quote. It says, "Nobody in the world, nobody in history, has ever gotten their freedom by appealing to the moral sense of the people who are oppressing them." I would hate for this to sit here and listen to or think that the individuals who are representing their constituency in Boone County do not have the moral sense to understand the ramifications of not putting this on the agenda and allowing it not to, 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 to slip through. I'm perplexed in my thinking that how so many other cities across the country, Republican and Democrats, have allowed such a thing to be painted and are also defecting, defacing of it. of it. Like, to me, this is just, it, it makes no sense at all what harm. I mean, when we watch a green line being painted down the middle of Main Street to represent, and I know that has something to do with the city doing. You don't need a special process, I'm understanding there, that, that are required. But if you're willing to paint a green line to celebrate a bunch of drinking in downtown because it brings money to the city, but you can't paint a mural that's on a side street, no one's even asking for it to be painted down the middle of Main Street, which in my, in my mind, where it should be. Because this is not just about the freedom of, of Black Lives Matter. And a lot of these, everybody wants to jump into this, oh, well, we can't say Black Lives Matter because all lives matter. Well, let me just give you another little story here. If your house is on fire and you call the fire department, and the fire department shows up and is putting your fire out at your house, and I came over and said, hey, what about my house? How about destroying my house? To me, that sounds foolish, because if I don't stop the fire that's going on in the house that I'm addressing, it's going to spread everywhere else. And whether the council wants to sit up here and recognize that systematic, systemic racism or oppression exists or not, I think we're way past it. We're 2020 years into the making of why we sit here right now. We watch a Republican and Democratic, okay, sides of the aisle just put their own needs aside. It reminds me of, in the work that I do, and I am a social worker, it reminds me of watching two arguing parents in a divorced household, okay, while the little kid stands there and says, hey, we're down here, what about us? Do we count, or is this about your egos and about the backdoor conversations that I know that happiest that happened?
Sir, you have 30 seconds left.
Because I know there's some good hearts, and there's some good people funded council. And I know that for certain, okay? But I also know that a lot of times when you get into this democracy that has been given a bad name by capitalistic type of infusion, straight money into policy, and backdoor talking, I know when the day that I live, where the Electoral College is outweighing the popular vote, then I know we have problems. Because the people put in the office are the ones that are, they're put there by us because of the stuff that they say that they're going to do for us.
Sorry, your five minutes are up.
Can I ask another one more time, lady? Somebody else wants to call?
Yes, so that number again is 772-7101. Hi, you're here for public comment? Okay, I'll put you on speaker. Hi, can you hear us? Can you hear us?
I can hear you.
Okay, great. Tell us your name and if you're a city resident.
My name is Carrie Rennie. I live on the West Side of Binghamton. And I'm calling in because I'm really distressed about the fact that this resolution, which will just reinforce that Binghamton is a welcoming and loving community, was taken off the agenda or didn't make it to the agenda. I'm also really distressed as someone familiar with the procedure at how this was allowed to happen. I don't know, I, I mean, I understand that we are living in unprecedented times, and the way that you folks have had to meet has been super challenging. And I admire you for all the work that you're doing trying to make it work. But this notion that everyone is assumed to be approving of something unless they take their name off, this, this negative, instead, instead of actually having to sign it out, publicly say that you're signing it out, it's a huge problem. And you're looking at one of the reasons for it right now. One of the speakers earlier, or a letter, or one of the speakers made reference to this being done, and it seems like it was done in the dark of night or in the shadows. And that's exactly what it's done this time. Because my understanding is that this resolution was presumed by Councilwoman Friedman, who brought it forward, to be coming forward until last night. And that was because council members were allowed to quietly and secretly take their name off of this. Now, we all know who did it, because we know whose names remained on. But the problem is, you're elected and you have an obligation to speak to your constituents about why you choose to vote, the way you vote, why you choose to sponsor or not sponsor the things that you do. And it's hard for your constituents to reach out to you and maybe lobby you, and maybe explain a new perspective that will change your mind. And trust me, that will happen. But it can't really happen if folks don't know where you stand. And this, doing things backwards, assuming everyone's for something unless you say you're not, and you don't apparently do that in the work session, you do that afterwards, is, it boggles my mind. There is zero transparency here. And transparency has been an issue with the city for the last six years. And in the last six months, it has only gotten worse and worse and worse. I reached out to my councilwoman with some questions about the fire station, and, you know, she really didn't have much more information than I had from the press release. That is not how this works. That is not how any of this works. And the fact that you will all advocate your, your responsibilities, what people elected you to do, is just, it's, it's really disappointing to me. So, back to this resolution, you know, I've watched this, the city struggled with a welcoming resolution for immigrants. And I've watched, you know, they were not always unanimous votes. But people stood up and they explained why they were voting. They heard from their constituents, and they took those things into account. And they made their reasons and their rationales clear. Now, I understand, these are really challenging, trying times, and this is not the ideal way to have one of these meetings. And trust me, my preference would be to be sitting in the same room with you, looking you all in the eye. Because I know so many of you, and I know so many of you are really good people whose hearts are in the right place. But it's time for you to stand up, speak up, don't allow your voice to be taken away, and make sure that you're representing the people who elected you. Thank you.
For the phone call. Are you done with the emails?
Yes. So that number one last time is 772-7101 for public comment. Hi, you're here for public comment? Okay, I'll put you on speaker. Okay, can you tell us your name and if you're a city resident?
Just that it's more of a question, definition, where the council actually stands on certain things. You know, systematic racism is mentioned a lot, but the thing is, is I don't think there is an exact consensus on the definition or whether individuals actually truly believe that it exists. And if possible, I'd like to see if, you know, maybe just, you know, a simple statement written at some point being given out by the council members, just, you know, so we have specific terms that we're on the same page on would be good. Another thing, too, is I'd actually like to know exactly where the council stands on the definition of, well, and the term, and definition of intersectionality, and also how you would actually, you know, apply that to legislation or different policies. And that's, that's pretty much what I, what I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you for the phone call.
Thank you.
Can you guys hear those phone calls?
Pretty much.
It's a little bit hard to hear, but I think I can get the gist of what the speakers are saying.
Yeah, I get the, I get the gist of it.
Thank you.
In the past, it's been relatively easy to hear the calls. So I'm not sure if something, maybe something's going on that makes it more difficult. But normally, it's easy to hear.
Lori's on vacation, so that might be it.
I'll take a motion to close the public hearing section of the meeting. Motion to close. Hold on, we got a phone call.
You're here for public comment? Okay, hold on. Okay, please tell us your name and if you're a city resident.
Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Just wanted to make sure. Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
Yes, perfect. So my name's Sarah Denhofer. I am a resident of the West Side of Binghamton. I just wanted to drop in and say that considering that there have been nearly a dozen deaths in recent years, and the Broom County jail massively higher than the national average, it's incredibly shocking to hear anyone claim, especially on the council, that systemic racism is not an issue within this county. So I seriously hope that you all reconsider your positions. Thanks.
Thank you. Try another minute, will you? If you threw a minute without a phone call, we'll call. That's a dead call over there. I'll take a motion to close the public hearing, the public comment section.
Motion is moved.
Okay. We're going to call, we're going to close the section up now. All right, we'll move Would anybody like anything removed from the preferred agenda?
Wait, yes, but I think the phone was ringing before I heard the second.
Yes. Oh, darn, no.
We're going to move on. If anybody like anything removed from the preferred agenda?
Yes, I would. This is Councilwoman Friedman.
Mr. President, point of order. I believe, I believe second legislation is the next agenda item before the preferred agenda.
Correct. It is, I'm sorry, you're right.
Thank you, Mr. President. At a previous meeting, we voted on a resolution regarding the accepting of a payment regarding the Vestal Ave bypass project near Ivanhoe Road. Several council members, including myself, communicated, are, quite frankly, are disgusted with the fact that there really was no possibility for the city to be able to advocate on behalf of our homeowners regarding the taking of private property for the purpose of the project. However, that being said, we are still in the situation that because the resolution failed, we are unable to actually accept the $15,000 that we unfortunately, as a city, cannot do anything about as it relates to the project in and of itself. So with that being said, Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion for reconsideration of introductory resolution number R20-46, which was a resolution authorizing the city to accept payment, and for the mayor to execute an agreement with New York State DOT for acquisition of additional property for the Vestal Ave bypass, pin 9038.26.221. The resolution failed to pass at a 3-3 vote on June 17th's business meeting. This motion is to reconsider this because not all the members were present at the June 17th meeting. And I, after speaking with some of my colleagues, I do also realize that there was some confusion regarding the aspects of the project in and of themselves and specific receiving of the payment.
Sure, do I open it up to comments now?
Anybody can second that motion, even if they were not present at the proceeding. Only somebody who voted in favor of the motion can make a motion to reconsider, but that needs a second.
I'll, I'll second that.
That's going to need a roll call vote unless there's any comment or discussion.
Anybody want to comment or discuss this? We can vote.
This is Councilwoman Friedman. I just, I have a question. I'm, sorry, I'm a little bit confused about what exactly it is we're voting on. Is it the exact legislation that we previously voted on to accept the $15,000 from the Department of Transportation?
That is correct. I didn't make, I didn't make a motion to amend something. I made a motion to reconsider it.
This is the motion for reconsideration, in which case, that's one vote. And then if you guys do vote reconsider it with a majority, then the same legislation that was in front of you last time is subject to another vote. Does that make sense, Councilwoman Friedman?
Yes, it does. Is this something that, sorry, again, this is the first time I've seen this happen. So is this something that we can normally do, like reconsider legislation that we have already voted on?
Yes. So you can do that. You can absolutely do that. It needs to be raised, however, by somebody who is in the majority. A winning side, which we both last time, needs to be the one who makes the motion. That's what makes a valid motion for reconsideration. In a tie, we were 3-3, the prevailing party was the no vote because it did not happen. Therefore, Gio, who voted against the resolution or the legislation in the first instance, is now making the motion, which is then properly seconded by President Scanlon. However, you all need to vote as a proxy on the motion for reconsideration before you actually vote on the legislation again. Does that make sense? That like, it needs to go through the process in order to have the jurisdiction to vote on it again?
Right, yes, that makes sense. Thank you for the clarification. I was just confused about, I didn't realize that was something that we could do. All right, thank you.
This is the first one you've had, so that absolutely makes sense. Your questions are valid.
And thank you for clarifying for us.
Of course. So I think President Scanlon left it with, are there any questions or comments on the motion for reconsideration?
We'll go with a voice vote now. Are you okay?
Councilwoman Scorritti?
All of it. Aye.
Councilwoman Resnetti?
Aye.
Councilwoman Riley?
Aye.
Councilwoman Friedman?
Aye.
Councilman Burns?
No, nay.
Councilman Strom?
Nay.
And President Scanlon?
Yes.
So that's five ayes, two nays, Burns and Strom.
Therefore, the legislation has a majority to be reconsidered. And Gio, you can go ahead and read that now.
Now, Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to approve introductory resolution number R20-46.
Need a second? I'll second it then.
I'll second.
If there's no discussion, I'll call the question, Mr. President.
Question for a call? What call, please, Lee?
Yes. Councilwoman Scorinji?
Aye.
Councilwoman Resnetti?
Aye.
Councilwoman Riley?
Nay.
Councilwoman Friedman?
Aye.
Councilwoman Burns?
Nay.
Councilwoman Strom?
Nay.
President Scanlon?
Aye.
Okay, so that is four ayes, three nays, Riley, Burns and Strom.
Okay, I'll do the prefer.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Good, thank you, Mr. President.
That's pretty good. Would anybody like anything removed from the preferred agenda?
Yes, Mr. President, this is Councilwoman Friedman.
Yes.
I would please like to remove introductory ordinance 20-60, authorizing the mayor to submit the annual action plan.
You have a second on that?
I'll second.
All right, never mind.
Yeah, just as a point of clarification, as I know we've never removed something from the preferred agenda before, when you put something on the preferred agenda, that means everyone's intending to vote yes, therefore, before the preferred agenda is read as a point of order, we allow people to remove it. It doesn't need a second because essentially a council member is saying, no, I don't want to vote on this, it's a block, and in fact, I'm probably not going to vote on it, so I want to take it off, and that's absolutely fine.
Will you want to read these, please?
Yes, that's.
Yes. Okay, so at this point, we'll begin with the rest of the preferred agenda. So the first item tonight on preferred agenda is introductory ordinance 58, Considered Finance. This is an ordinance to amend the 2020 refuse fund budget for personnel changes.
Is it a voice vote?
No, it just needs.
So we do comments or questions?
No.
Comments or questions on this?
Okay. I, I, I do.
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, so the, the mural is in this preferred agenda?
Yes.
Correct. So I would just like to point out to everybody that is listening and watching, we are right now voting when he's gonna read this through. This is the, this is what we've all agreed to. We've agreed to allow this mural process to go through, is that correct? Yeah. But I'm just letting people know that, I know there's a lot of people listening and watching. I just want everybody to know that's what's going on. Okay, thank you.
So the second item on the preferred agenda is introductory ordinance 20-59, Considered Finance. This is an ordinance to amend the 2020 general fund budget to create revenue and expense budget lines to accept and account for funds from the Provider Relief Fund under the CARES Act.
Questions or comments?
And then the next item on the preferred agenda is introductory ordinance 20-61, Considered Finance. This is an ordinance authorizing the city to accept all insurance proceeds and donations for the aerospace reconstruction project.
Questions or comments on this? And notes.
Okay, the next item on the preferred agenda is introductory ordinance 20-62, rooted in Rules and Special Studies. This is an ordinance to authorize the city clerk to supplement event permits to provide for painting murals on public streets.
Questions or comments on this?
Yes, this is Councilwoman Friedman.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would just like to make a comment that I, I'm supporting this ordinance specifically to get the ball rolling on Kristin Mann's Black Lives Matter mural. I understand that this is put in place for larger implications and will be used to theoretically approve future murals. And I am, I'm going to support this with the understanding that it might need to be amended in the future. I know that we talked about this at the work session, but this, at this moment, seems to be the, the way to get a Black Lives mural painted downtown. It's about time, saying that Black Lives matter is not a controversial statement. In fact, that's kind of a low bar to say that someone's life matters. And so I, I do just want to say on the record, that's why specifically I'm supporting this piece of legislation. Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Thank you.
Yes, Mr. President, can I make a comment, please?
Yes.
I just want to be, thank you, I just want to be clear that this is, um, there was no process in place, that was my understanding, regarding how to move forward with things like this, and the process that we came up with has really absolutely nothing to do with content. It was content neutral, and so I want folks to understand that. This is, there was by, I don't ever recall anybody voting this down or not supporting this, but I do recall folks saying there has been, there is no process in place. So I just wanted to put that out there because I feel that we sometimes only hear bits and pieces. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Other questions or comments? Councilwoman Riley?
Yes, thank you, President Scanlon. I just would like to add a little piece of information. Typically, processes are put in place when there's an impetus for change, and there have been other murals, there have been other acts. So yes, we did learn that a process was necessary, so therefore, this was created. As my colleague mentioned, it may need to go back for revision once we move forward. However, we don't need to delay this any further. Let's move forward with our process as we've agreed and proceed in supporting the message and the messenger on this mural.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Other questions or comments? Go ahead, Lee.
Okay. And then the last item tonight on the preferred agenda is introductory resolution 20-57, Considered Finance. This is a resolution authorizing the mayor to accept a grant from the United States Tennis Association for related expenses associated with reopening of facilities in 2020.
Questions or comments?
Now we do a voice vote, motion for the preferred agenda.
I'll take a motion to accept the preferred agenda. Second. Voice vote, please, Lee.
Yes. Councilwoman Scorinji?
Aye.
Councilwoman Resnetti?
Aye.
Councilwoman Riley?
Aye.
Councilwoman Friedman?
Aye.
Councilman Burns?
Aye.
Councilman Strom?
Aye.
President Scanlon?
Aye.
That's seven ayes, zero nays.
Okay, onto non-preferred agenda. Introductory ordinance 20-60, Considered Finance, Councilman Strom.
Thank you, Mr. President. I ask council for unanimous consideration of introductory ordinance 20-60 and ordinance authoring the mayor to submit the fiscal year 46, 2046 annual action plan and accept any and all funds allocated by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development from the CDBG, ESG and home entitlement programs.
Questions or comments on this?
Yes, this is Councilwoman Friedman.
Hold on, one second, Councilwoman. You had, I thought Gio seconded. Gio, you seconded, didn't you?
Yes, Mr. President.
That's okay, all right, Councilwoman Friedman, go ahead, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I am going to make a motion to hold this over on the basis that I don't feel comfortable voting on a piece of legislation at the same meeting that we had the public hearing. To me, that, how can we possibly consider the public's input if the hearing happens an hour before we're supposed to vote? Whereas if we are really going to consider the public's input, I think we need to have a ti- time in between when we hear the public's input and when we vote on this.
Okay, we're, I believe the deadline of voting is the 15th, is that correct, Lee?
Yes.
All right, so we're gonna have to have a special meeting.
Right now, that motion is not seconded.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Second.
Okay, so, Councilwoman Riley, thank you, Councilwoman Riley. So we're, we're a little bit under the gun here, so we have to come up with a date for a special meeting. This will be, it'll be a short meeting, obviously. What about, what about availability on the 10th? I'll leave, wait for the availability on the 10th, which is Friday at 5:30.
Councilwoman Scorinji, are you available on Friday the 10th at 5:30?
Um, I think that should be okay, yes.
Okay. Councilwoman Resnetti?
Um, yes, Friday the 10th at 5:30, is that what you said?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you.
Councilwoman Riley?
I am available.
Councilwoman Friedman?
Yes, I'm available.
Councilman Burns?
I'll miss the second half of Ellen, but okay, I'm available.
Councilman Strom?
If I'm available, it'll be by phone, so I'll be subject to, you know, any technical difficulties, but I will make every attempt to be there if I can. But I can't be there on the computer, so hopefully I'll have a signal.
Okay, and President Scanlon?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, so a special meeting is set for Friday the 10th at 5:30. Thank you.
Question, President Scanlon?
Yes.
Will we have a summary of the calls that were received relating to the, the budget earlier? Because I had difficulty hearing it.
You can, I could put a summary together if that works.
Thank you.
You can put a summary together, yes, so you'll have that Friday afternoon, obviously. You'll have it noonly, is that possible?
Uh, yes.
It's a very late, so it's gonna be Friday at noon. Does it work, Councilwoman Riley?
That's fine, as long as we're able to then determine if it aligns with the community. Are they also able to continue to submit thoughts? Or have we completely closed it?
The public hearing is closed, although I would encourage you to reach out to your constituents if you want further feedback.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move forward with the second item on non-preferred agenda. Introductory ordinance 20-55, Considered Finance, Councilman Strom.
Thank you, Mr. President. I ask council to, for unanimous consideration of introductory ordinance 20-55 and ordinance to amend the 2020 water fund budget to adjust personnel service lines.
We need a second on it.
Second.
Thank you, Councilman, let's, have questions or comments on this, please?
Call the question, Mr. President.
Question, we're called?
Councilwoman Scorinji?
Aye.
Councilwoman Resnetti?
Aye.
Councilwoman Riley?
Aye.
Councilwoman Friedman?
Aye.
Councilman Burns?
Aye.
Councilman Strom?
Aye.
President Scanlon?
Aye.
That's seven ayes, zero nays.
Introductory ordinance 20-56, Considered Finance, Councilman Strom.
Thank you, Mr. President. I ask councils for unanimous consideration of introductory ordinance 20-56 and ordinance, and ordinance to amend the 2020 general fund budget to adjust personnel service lines.
Questions or comments? There's, I'm sorry. Questions or comments? See, none.
What question, Mr. President?
Question, we're called?
Councilwoman Scorinji?
Aye.
Councilwoman Resnetti?
Aye.
Councilwoman Riley?
Aye.
Councilwoman Friedman?
Aye.
Councilman Burns?
Aye.
Councilman Strom?
Aye.
President Scanlon?
Aye.
That's seven ayes, zero nays.
Introductory ordinance 20-57, Considered Finance, Councilman Strom.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ask council for unanimous consideration of introductory ordinance 20-57 and ordinance to amend the 2020 refuse bu- fund budget, us, personnel, personnel service lines.
Just a second. Yeah. All right, any questions or comments on this?
Call the question, Mr. President.
We're called?
Councilwoman Scorinji?
Aye.
Councilwoman Resnetti?
Aye.
Councilwoman Riley?
Aye.
Councilwoman Friedman?
Aye.
Councilman Burns?
Aye.
Councilman Strom?
Aye.
President Scanlon?
Aye.
That's seven ayes, zero nays.
Okay, on the public comments from council members, I forgot where we left off. Tonight, we'll start with Councilwoman Riley, please.
Somehow I knew that was gonna be the case, but I appreciate it. Thank you, President Scanlon. Fellow council members, this has been a very interesting week. I know you all have heard and felt, not even a subset of the population sentiment regarding our council's position in terms of making Binghamton or recognizing Binghamton through the proclamation as a welcoming city. It didn't say Black Lives Matter in their resolution. It talked about what's happening across the globe in an effort to formalize our, our thoughts and our support of our population. It was hard for me, and I tried to separate how I know you guys on other issues, but it's very difficult to know that, again, support was withdrawn when we, dear, receive an email later in the evening. So I did have to share that. And as I've always said, we can agree to disagree as long as our disagreement is not rooted in production or the minimization of my freedom. So I also would like to thank the First Ward Action Council. I was able to go by there to learn more about the programs that the city has partnered with them in effort to support our seniors. So there are some great programs out there for residents that are 65 and above, so please, please share that message. Typically, they don't have the access to the web and the Facebook, the social media platforms that we use. There's also a group grant program available to people who are listening. Please, please, take advantage of that program. I'd also like to recognize the various agencies that are continuing to support our residents, not only in the third districts but across the city regarding food security or food insecurity, because that is an issue that was addressed in many of the forums and, and in many of the conversations. So I want to particularly thank the Binghamton Food Rescue because the bok choy that I was able to help pass out was beautiful and our residents appreciated it. I'd also like to take this time to recognize the transparency efforts of our mayor. He sent out a press release about the youth programming over the past seven years, I believe, and I appreciated that because this is the budget that we get as new council members. You see, mine is tabbed, this was done on my own. It was never walked through, it was never explained, and I did send meetings so that we can be well informed when speaking with our constituents. I hate that it had to happen through a press release, but it is what it is. But I, I look forward to that same transparency when it comes to releasing the names of the Stakeholders Coalition that has been selected to work on the legislation that will be crafted per the executive order of our governor. Thank you so much, have a good evening.
Thank you, Councilwoman. And the Councilwoman Friedman, please.
Thank you, President Scanlon. Well, I think this was the meeting where we heard the most from our constituents and I, from all districts, so thank you for everyone. and I, from all districts, so thank you for everyone who called in and emailed to voice their opinions. Um, and I have to speak candidly that I was, um, disturbed and disheartened to find out that my resolution in support of Black Lives did not make it to the agenda. Um, luckily, I'm second in line in the, in the council member, um, comments, so I would be curious to hear from my other council members who withdrew their support, what specifically it was about that non-binding resolution that was, that you felt you couldn't get behind. I don't know if it was the acknowledgement that racism exists, I don't know if it was the condemning of the murders, um, either at the hands of the police or by white supremacists. And I don't know if it was the part where we pledged to listen to marginalized communities to help make Binghamton a safer place. Um, so I would be curious to hear that. I, i- in proposing this legislation, I'll, I'll be honest, I thought this was kind of a shoo-in, given that it was a non-binding resolution, given that there were no action items or, or anything. We weren't, um, you know, making any structural changes, but just taking a stand and letting our black and people of color, re- residents of color, I said that awkwardly, our black residents and residents of color, that we acknowledge that their, their lives are important enough that we should listen to them, because they, they know what is best for them. So I sometimes, you know, like, will say things that are problematic, that I don't realize until I'm corrected by someone who I've accidentally negatively impacted, and I take that in stride, most of the time, I hope. Um, but, you know, I recognize that my, my identities allow me a certain amount of privilege, where there are certain things that, that I overlook. So, I, I know that's how I strive to conduct myself as a city council member, is to listen to constituents who occupy different identities from me, right? Like, I'm white, depending on who you ask, but, um, you know, I, I recognize that sometimes I need to take a step back and, and listen to my residents, my black residents and residents of, of color. Um, so I, I was deeply disappointed that this legislation did not make to the agenda, make it to the agenda, and, um, I, I hope that this is not an indication of how we are going to pass legislation in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Uh, the Councilman Burns, please.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, yeah, it's been a wild, the bride, to say the least. There was a lot of misinformation given, people, they misinterpreted things. And, uh, I really did not like, uh, reading comments saying that our Republican colleagues were racist or anything like that. Uh, everybody agreed, the mural was on the preferred agenda that everybody agreed with, and yet on Facebook today, I was reading that the Republicans didn't want it. And, uh, anyway, the, the resolution, uh, that was taken off the agenda, you know, I, I bragged about my great-grandfather a lot when I was running for office. He, he was, uh, on the city council in the nineteen thirties, and he was from an immigrant family, and, uh, uh, they were Irish Catholics. And the one, the one memory that is passed on to us is that, uh, he would see the signs in the window, "Help Wanted, Irish Need Not Apply," and that really applied to the Irish Catholics, uh, the shanty Irish, they called them. And he walked around as a little boy and saw these signs, and, uh, he, he did. It would have been nice, I think, if he could have seen something written on the ground that said, uh, you know, "Your life does matter," that these signs that you're reading are, are wrong. So, I'm, I'm, I'm proud to vote, to put the Black Lives Matter in the road, and I, I would like to see, uh, Councilman Friedman's resolution. I'd like to see, maybe grab one of the Republicans, or maybe, a- a- and, and, and write it so that whatever was wrong with it, uh, we can make one that says so that the, so that the young black people, young Hispanic people in the city can see something from our city saying that, that, you know, you're, you, you are welcome here, your life matters, and you, you, you have the right to the space that you, that you take up on this, uh, earth. Anyway, that's it for me, thanks.
Thank you, Councilman. And the Councilman Strong, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, wow, I have a, I have a bunch of ideas I wrote down, I just like to go through some of them real quick. Um, you know, I, I, I take this very seriously. Um, I was gonna say, because sometimes we say this before, that I was gonna know from a press release that, uh, from Jared Cram, from the mayor, that, uh, the street, uh, the bridge over, uh, Pierce Creek at Dublin Street is going to, is being redone. So if you're over in this area, um, watch that, next, the Pierce Creek over Conklin Ave will be done. And I say that, and I'm not, I'm not laughing at that, because I, I just speak from my heart, so I apologize if I ramble a little bit, but, no, I ran for city council, I'm thinking, those are the kind of issues that we're gonna, we're gonna deal with. Um, and when we come up with this, I'm not shying away from anything, and I'm not afraid to, to speak into anything. Um, but this is, this is tough, you know, you, some of us work, some of us do our stuff, and we're trying to pay attention, and we're trying to take this very, very seriously. Um, I just wanna say, I appreciate what Councilwoman Burns said earlier and what he just said. Um, and I'm not gonna go specifically to my, my thoughts right now, I would like a chance to discuss them later, but I just wanna say from some of the comments earlier, I'm not indifferent, I don't have animus towards anyone, I don't have a racist bone in my body. I work with a lot of people from all nationalities and all walks of life, and all, just everything, and I respect all of them. Um, and I've worked with, with, with those, everybody for, for years. Um, you know, I was born in nineteen seventy, I was, uh, you know, I, it's a small town, but I, I just, it's, it's not, it's not what I think, I don't, I don't think that way. However, um, I'm not sweeping issues under the rug, that was mentioned earlier. I want Binghamton to be welcoming and inclusive. The last paragraph of the, of the resolution, I hundred percent, I hundred percent, if that, if that was what we were voting on right now, I would have said yes. Um, I do believe that a bipartisan resolution that we want to be a unanimous resolution from the council should be able to be talked about and talked through, um, with all of us, quite frankly. And I, I have the utmost respect for, for Councilwoman Friedman and the work that she put into it, and my not signing the resolution does not equal my opinion, that was mentioned earlier, my position. That's not a fair statement. Me not, not signing that out does not automatically equal my position, not even close. Um, and I just wanna say that definitively. Um, I'm open to a resolution, but I wanna be able to talk through it in a safe, in a safe way. And quite frankly, uh, if you heard some of the comments earlier and some of the tenor and the tones earlier, um, there's times I don't feel like it, it's, it's, not with you, not with you other, other six members, but that is not the space to actually talk through this in a way that doesn't get misconstrued, because some of the stuff that was already said has already been misconstrued. Being indifferent, being, having animus towards people, sweeping issues under the rug, not being welcoming and in- inclusive. And by just automatically not doing something that you automatically believe something else, and that is absolutely not true, not true even, even a little bit. Um, but I think with a resolution like this, I think that we have to have a chance to talk through it together, and, and I'm not saying that I wanna be the, the, the author of it, but I do believe, you know, when you look at issues going from the Declaration of Independence immediately to COVID nineteen to just back and forth, I would like a chance to talk through some of those points. Not saying that maybe you reword, maybe you don't, but at least have a chance to talk through that, um, before I sponsor that, and then I don't think it's any different than anything else in this, uh, this matter can be, you can see even from today, inflammatory very quickly, it can escalate very quickly, for in my mind, no reason. That, that does not, that's not who I am. So if you put that on me, that that's who I am, obviously, I'm gonna feel a problem with that, because it's not true. Um, but I do believe that, as with any other legislation, especially something like this, even though it's non-binding, that we should have a chance to talk through it together. Um, and, you know, we didn't, didn't do that. And that doesn't mean that, that, like I said, I have the utmost respect for Councilwoman Friedman and appreciate your time in doing that, and I don't wanna say that I'm open to a resolution personally, I just wanna be able to talk through it in a safe way, and, um, once I, you know, am able to do that, if I'm in agreement with it, then I will absolutely support it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. Uh, the Councilman Skringi, please.
Mr. President, due to the tenor of this meeting, um, I'm not gonna provide a comment tonight, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Uh, the Councilwoman Resnety?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I guess there's a lot that could be said here tonight, I mean, a lot was already said, but, um, I'm gonna start out by saying that, uh, right now, this moment, um, especially after some of the comments that were made tonight, I'm feeling extremely disheartened, and, uh, frankly, I'm very concerned. It appears to me that, um, a false narrative is being presented, um, for, made for the purpose to, I don't know what, stir emotions up, uh, maybe to intentionally, surely that's what it felt like tonight, uh, maybe to intentionally allow for some council members to be painted in a negative way, um, I don't know. Um, I don't usually see, look at, at, um, you know, streaming, streaming line videos, Facebook sort of stuff, not often, because I feel like they're not really discussions, and, um, I steer away from them, but I was tagged to one, and so today I checked it out, because my name came up, and, um, I understand now why some of those comments came in through those callers, where Republicans were told to F off practically, because, um, it was a very one-sided conversation, and frankly, I found it to be extremely hypocritical. I'm, I don't know, really, that there's ever been a city council meeting or a city council business meeting, uh, work session or business meeting, where there hasn't been some, for lack of a better word, complaint about lack of transparency and having way too many RLs being expedited. And by the way, I'm absolutely not saying that I agree or disagree with that, that's actually on record, those, these videos, these meetings are recorded, right? So there's been some of them, a lot of them. And yet, oh, and not to forget, and most recently, I believe there was a city council member who, uh, was very disheartened with similar issues and made some comments on the social media about last minute, minute communication, lack of transparency, and an actual call to the community to support them in addressing that. And then, in the same breath practically, uh, or in this, in the very next move, this resolution is presented to city council the eleventh hour, as far as I'm concerned, without any opportunity to discuss it. And also, it is being asked to be expedited by the same people who typically question, um, why things are being expedited. And again, I'm not saying at all that, um, that should, or should not be questioned. I'm just trying to give the audience here a little bit of the background information, which by the sounds of it, has been completely omitted. In addition, my understanding is, I suppose I could be wrong, but, um, there is a, um, process that exists for this. Um, I, there was a, a similar resolution that's presented, that was presented a few years ago, and it went to a committee for discussion. To make a blanket statement that Republicans would not support all or part of this, when they had absolutely no chance to discuss it, frankly, to me, is offensive, and we saw the results of that type of language, and we were told to F off, right? So, we are being asked to vote on a resolution in which we have no, uh, um, choice to be part of, and frankly, what if some of us felt that the resolution did not go far enough? As I recall, Monday, there was a, a recommendation made for ten days to have the, um, the mural up, I suggested, "That's not enough, let's do, I don't know, thirty." And so there is a level of unfairness that's happening here that's incredibly troubling to me. We are dealing with sensitive, important issues that without a doubt here are eliciting all kinds of emotion in our community, and I, like most of you, I'm new at this, and there may not, there may be a whole lot of things that I don't know, but I do know this, that before I make irresponsible accusations and inflammatory-type blanket statements, and to make sure that I'm not engaging in pushing what may be false information to the, our community via social media or whatever other mode, I owe it to those who voted for me to pick up the phone, knock on doors, whether it's the mayors, the clerks, corporation council, even better, my fellow council members, to have the one-on-one, face-to-face conversation and get as much accurate information as possible. And so I'm very disheartened by what I have experienced, what I saw here today, and about this hypocritical process. For me, really, it's about, everything has to do, uh, with the, um, with the, the process, it's really not about the content, and everything really has to do with lack of consistency. So, that's all from me tonight, Mr. President. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilwoman. I'm gonna echo a couple things that were said already. Councilwoman Friedman, um, I'm not sure if you wrote this yourself, or you found this somewhere, or a combination of the both, but, um, it, I don't, you can't expect me to support something that I have, I didn't have say, any say in what's. Now, if you came to me and said, "We should talk about city council," you've been around it for six months, I certainly would not have said, "We're not gonna do that." So we certainly could have, you could have brought it up to me that way, and we'll discuss it, or put it into a committee. There's a lot of ways to go this way. So I, I'm not against what you wrote, I'm against the way it, it all happened. So I can't be expected to support something I have no say in. And, and I, we're, we're still, we're still a group here, and if, for, for one person to write something and submit it and say, "It'd be, it'd be upset that we didn't support it," I don't know how, I don't know, that's not a good thought process to me. I will take a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
You too.
Bye.
Bye, everybody.